Are we, just for clarification, are we reading the roll call tonight on the ordinance votes?
Okay.
Voice vote.
Okay.
Awkward silence. Councilmember Gurlik would like it added to the agenda.
I would, I think that's fantastic. I think it should be story time, honestly.
Better sing along.
One person every time.
Every week gets a story?
Needs a two-minute story.
I love that idea.
Yeah.
Alright, we're starting down there on that end, so.
Ward 4's got the best stories.
Next meeting, next meeting you start.
That's right.
Next meeting.
Story time.
Six o'clock.
We're gonna pray.
Start. Those in character, please stand for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Cameron, would you lead us in prayer?
Let us pray. Dear only Father, we just thank you for this day, thank you for this city, and thank you for this community. For the people who make it up, Lord, I just pray, God, that tonight you would just guide and direct us in all that we do and all that we say, and grant us wisdom in all we, as we take on the issues of the city, leading, guiding us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. When I have a group in here, I kinda start out by saying, "Thank you for coming. I appreciate you being here." From my experience, I've been told that public speaking is a very close second to holding a snake, in fears that people have. And I know coming here and getting ready to speak can be a nerve-wracking thing. Please know that I'm gonna mess up ten more times than you ever will in the three minutes that you'll be speaking. I'll mess up a lot of times tonight, and that's just what we do, and that's okay. I wanna know that, I want you to know that we wanna hear your thoughts, and we appreciate you being here. So, I'm going to start with citizen participation, but I'm gonna start with citizen participation for things not on the agenda. I know a lot of people are here to talk about the rezoning. We're gonna get to that, but I'd like to start off with anybody here wishing to speak to something not on the agenda tonight. Please come to the podium, state your name, your address, and you'll be given three minutes to speak. And Todd, I think you wanted to talk about something not on the agenda.
My name is Todd Bessore. I live at 660 East Ginger Bid Court. It's in Diamond View Estate. It's at the corner of Ginger Bid Court and Conroy.
Thank you, Todd. What can we do for you tonight?
Well, I just wanted to kinda give you my experience with AT&amp;T Fiber Optics. People in our neighborhood would've liked to have had some communication, some advanced notification that this was gonna happen. Flags start appearing. We've got the underground utilities location teams there. Still not sure what's going on, rasking around. I didn't know that AT&amp;T was coming until the night before they hung something on the door. Next morning, we've got a crew. That day, they hit a gas line across the street. We had Spire working twenty-four hours. We had lights, trucks over there working twenty-four hours. They dug up that yard. They dug up all their sprinkler lines, did a lot of damage in their yard, and I'm thinking, "Well, I'm unscathed right now." Then, they worked all the next night. They were banging around out there till after eleven. The crew that was working in our neighborhood was from Dallas, Texas. I went out to talk to them the day before they started to find out exactly what they were gonna do, be doing. Not one of them could speak English. One of them was saying, "Two feet, two feet, two feet," 'cause I was worried about my sprinkler lines. Well, I thought, "Well, he's gonna go two feet, and maybe he's not gonna hit anything." So they diagonaled under our sidewalk. I thought, "Well, you know, other than they did a lot of yard damage, and we've got rocks piled up," I'm thinking, "Okay, maybe we're okay." Well, last Saturday morning, I'm sitting in our, we have a tri-level house. I'm sitting in the lower level. I hear something gurgling. Toilet in the basement's gurgling. I go in. Bathtub's filled up with four inches of water, so I know what's happened. I called the city. Very impressed with who I talked to, Tim, and I can't remember the other guy's name. They came out, said, "There's no, you know, our sewer's fine. They fit your lateral line." So, we weren't able to get anybody. All, all of the time, we're having to use limited facilities, 'cause we've got a backup. My wife, at the time when this, this happened, our washing machine, she was using the washing machine. When it went into spin cycle, starts filling up with our washing machine water, and so we're carrying buckets out. So, we don't use anything water-sparingly. Far better came and fixed it on, they had to dig up two sections of sidewalk. They fixed it on Tuesday morning. They hit the bottom of our lateral line. Our lateral line was six, buried six feet. They hit the bottom of it, so they were six feet, six inches deep. Then, Brandon, who lives behind me, they hit his too. So a day later, he's got the gurgling. So we have to wait a couple days. We get it fixed. The sidewalk's fixed, but we've got, you know, yard damage. But I guess the, the question and the concern I had was, you know, I wish I would've got a flyer, that this is where they're coming, this is the way they're gonna do it, expect the flags. If you drove by my house now, it looks like the United Nations. There's, there's flags everywhere, and I, I talked to Karen, and I was told to keep the flags there. So I don't know, you know, if, if it's finished. There's still pipes, I mean, there's still tubes coming out, so I hate to do anything to my yard.
Right.
Because I don't know if they're done.
So, first of all, really well done getting it in in three minutes and eleven seconds. Well done. I appreciate that. A lot of people have to practice a long time to get that done. So, the second thing I'm gonna say is, I totally understand where you're coming from. I'd be frustrated too. Absolutely. The third thing, and I'm gonna say this to you, but I'm gonna say it for the crowd as well. A lot of times when you ask us questions, we're hearing about this for the first time too. And me answering a question on the fly like that's never gonna make anybody happy. So, what I'm gonna ask is, may I have your permission to look into this a little bit further, figure out what was done, what's gonna happen, and have somebody from the city reach back out to you so that we can figure out what needs to be done in the future?
Sure. And, 'cause they still need to kinda repair lots of yards. And then, I know I went over just a little bit. If I could say one thing real quick, if you guys would consider, you know, I know you do an average water usage to determine summer sewer rates. Is there any way that you could throw out October and March? Because those are two big water months, and that's like, right now, we're figuring up on an average sewer rate when people are still watering yards, and that's not going into the wastewater system. Could you, you, could you just do November, December, January, and February?
I'll look into it. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Now, also for Todd, but everybody else, after you're done speaking, if you want to, it doesn't hurt our feelings if you wanna leave. It's kind of a full room in here tonight. If you hear what you need to hear, you're welcome to leave afterwards. It happens to us all the time. Moving on to our consent agenda, unless there's anybody else here wishing to speak to something not on the agenda. Seeing no one else, I'm in closed citizen participation. Move on to consent agenda. I need a motion and a second for the approval of consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Moving on to boards, commissions, and committees scheduled. The Board of Adjustment meeting on October 6th, 2022 has been canceled. City Council will take place on October 18th, 2022. Please be here for a City Council Budget Workshop on November 1st, 2022. Our second Board of Adjustments meeting on November 3rd has been canceled, and we will have another City Council meeting on November 8th, 2022. So, we're gonna be in meetings a lot this month.
Yes.
That's alright. Moving on to item number seven on our agenda. This is old business and tabled items. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-54 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. We do not have our clerk, but we have you filling in tonight. So, would you please read the title of the ordinance?
Absolutely. An ordinance of the City Council approving the application to change the zoning classification of approximately 10.23 acres located at the 904-924 block of North Main Street from Zero Lot Line Residential R1-C to Trinity Republic Self-Storage Plan Development District PDD.
Thank you, ma'am. You're a natural. Moving on to the city. Any updates from the city on this issue?
No updates.
Any questions or discussion from council on this issue? Seeing none, I would take a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 22-54?
Motion.
We have a motion and a second, and we will now go to a roll call vote. We will not be doing this on our computers.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
Councilmember Poole?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Updike?
Aye.
Councilmember Gurlik?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
And Councilmember Gurkey?
Aye.
Ordinance 22-54 passes with a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to item number eight on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-55 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero.
An ordinance of the City Council approving a special use permit for Timber Line Land Company, LLC, to operate a boat, vehicle, and self-storage facility at the 3400 block of East US Highway 60.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from the city?
No updates.
Any questions or comments or discussion from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 22-55?
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call voice vote.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Gurlik?
Aye.
Councilmember Poole? Councilmember Updike?
Not voting for this one.
So that's a no? I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to make clear. Are you voting nay or abstaining?
I'm voting no.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am.
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gurkey?
Aye.
Ordinance 22-55 passes at a vote of seven to one. Moving on to item number nine on the agenda. This is 22-56. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero.
An ordinance of the City Council approving the final plat of the Westbury Gardens Phase I subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from the city?
No updates.
Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 22-56?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call voice, voice vote.
Councilmember Gurlik?
Aye.
Councilmember Updike?
Aye.
Councilmember Poole?
Aye.
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
Councilmember Gurkey?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Ordinance 22-56 passes at a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to new business. Now, given all the people here, I thought I'd take an executive action and move item number 12 up so that you have the option to get home for dinner, maybe. So, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna take up 22-58 first. I need you all to know that this is a first read, which means you just saw a second read and a passage of all this other business. This is not coming to a vote tonight. What we do is, we listen to all the input. We then go back and we ask questions as needed, and then we come back next time for a final vote. At the final vote, you will notice that there wasn't citizen participation. The time for that's tonight, and we very much welcome that. And I know that we have a long list of people here to do this. So, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 22-58 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero.
An ordinance of the City Council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 10.44 acres located at 688 South Kansas Avenue from agricultural AG and medium-density single-family R1-M to multifamily residential R-3.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. Karen Haynes, Builds Administrator. Built Right Homes has made an application for the rezoning of approximately 10.44 acres. This is located at 688 South Kansas. This is from medium-density single-family residential, or R1M, and agricultural AG to multifamily R3. The property is currently occupied by a single-family home that has recently burned. The land uses permitted in the multifamily R3 zoning district include multifamily dwellings, limited, single, and two-family residential, and then also residential care and assisted living facilities. The city's comprehensive plan generally encourages the expansion of both residential and commercial development through proactive rezoning at appropriate locations. Appropriate locations are described generally throughout the plan with regard to the relationship of land at particular locations to infrastructure capable of supporting various intensities and densities of uses. The rezoning of this parcel is consistent with the city's adopted plans. Specifically, in this area, you'll see on the map in front of you, we have medium-density, single-family, or R1M directly to the north. We also have that directly to the east. To the south, we have agricultural that is in city limits, and then directly to the west, we have agricultural that is outside the city limits. The rezoning of this parcel is not consistent with the surrounding land uses, which are described primarily as single-family residential. The water system, the name lift stations, and also the wastewater treatment facility do have the capacity to serve an R3 use at this particular location. As determined by the traffic impact study, the transportation system does currently have the capacity to support this use. No flow plan or sinkholes are present on this property. We did have the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting last night, and I do wanna bring up just a couple of points that were included in the findings of fact, and also the public participation at the meeting. So, proximity of multifamily units to existing houses, this is kind of the "not in my backyard" argument. Suggestion of tiered zoning for multifamily or, or overlay districts. Inconsistent with surrounding land uses, increases in traffic, drainage problems, crime increase from general addition of more people in the vicinity of this area, at odds with the small community feel of republic. There was a suggestion to also make it a dog park, spot zoning, and then also multifamily is not generally supported by the housing study that was done a couple of years ago. Staff does consider the proposed zoning amendment or rezoning to be generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, not consistent with the surrounding land uses, and it can be served by municipal utility services. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from council? Mr. Franklin?
So, just in my understanding, Ms. Haynes, this piece of property, this is one piece of property, but it has two different zonings?
Correct. So, prior to the rezoning application, it was actually two parcels, and when we look at multiple pieces and the opportunities for rezone, generally, our recommendation is always gonna be, if the use is intended to function as one property, it is a better opportunity to accomplish a rezone by combining those parcels. So, for this particular use, they did do a minor subdivision, combining them, so that we can hear the rezoning application for one parcel instead of two.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Can you give us just a brief, I know we've gone over these before, but what, what R3, what that allows?
Yes. So, the R3 is considered a residential use by our city ordinances and also the comprehensive plan. It does include multifamily, so that is better known as apartments. It also does allow for that graduated use, and does include single-family residential. So you can also do single-family residential and duplex units within the R3 zoning district.
Ms. Mitchell?
Karen, have you ever seen a jump in, in our zoning from an R1M ag all the way to a multifamily? Have we ever jumped that much?
That is a great question. I would probably have to get back to you on that. I don't, I'd have to get back to you. I don't wanna incorrectly answer that.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Updike?
So, they're wanting to build apartments, or they wanna build townhomes here, on an area where there's single-family units?
Sure. So, in this particular development, the, the conversation that we've had with the developer does include a mixture of duplex units and traditional kind of apartment, townhome units. So, it may not look like the traditional apartment, multi-story. I do think they're doing individual-type units that would be considered more of like a townhouse style.
And all the, finding the facts that you gave us for the meaning, it, pretty much all of them say it does not, it doesn't fit into that area.
Correct. And that's our determination also. Multifamily residential is a residential use, but the surrounding land uses are primarily single-family residential.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, so they could go anywhere from single-family, which is somewhere around it up to?
Correct.
Pretty wide, okay.
Yes, and that's consistent with the rest of our zoning ordinances. That has a graduating scale, allowing all of the uses that are basically below that use.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Ms. Haynes? Yep.
Ms. Haynes, when, sorry, when was this, so the yellow portion of property, when was that zone? Was that zone similar time as the surrounding area? To the, the R1M?
Honestly, I, I'm not sure. I would need to, to look back through our records to tell you for sure. The traditional, like, the neighborhoods there have been there for a number of years. I'm guessing over fifteen, but I would need to look at our records for sure, and I'm happy to do that.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Cameron?
So, Karen, just curiosity, looking at that, that map, the way the street lines lay out with the, the way it looks like the future was supposed to go through there, was intended to have a residential street going through those properties. Would that be a safe, I mean, when we're laying these properties out, whether it was us or this current staff, having that alignment of that street almost gives the impression that it was meant to go on through to create connectivity for more residential?
That is correct. So, in our subdivision regulations, when we look at preliminary plots, or laying out the lots and the infrastructure, they do have a requirement to extend both city utilities and street connections in cardinal directions, with the assumption that vacant parcels have the opportunity to redevelop in a manner consistent with the adjacent neighborhoods.
Thank you. Anything else? Alright. Thank you, ma'am. We will now open it up for citizen participation, and I have, Andrew, if you wanna talk, I'll let you talk. Alright, fine. First time I've seen you say no to that question. Yeah, early, alright. We'll, we'll save ya. I'd like to start off with Leanna McFarland. And somebody had to go first, so. Excellent. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Please state your name and your address, and you'll be given three minutes to speak.
Okay. Leanna McFarland, 653 South Adam Avenue in Republic. And, we made up a petition. I have sixty-six signatures on here, and the petition reads that we, the undersigned, hereby request that the zoning commission of the City of Republic, Green County, Missouri, does not rezone the acres located at 688 South Kansas Avenue from agricultural and medium-density, single-family residential R1M to multifamily residential R3. And we believe that this rezoning goes into effect, if, if the rezoning goes into effect, it will have the following negative impacts on the adjoining properties. It will significantly increase the amount of traffic moving through what are currently quiet residential neighborhoods. It will burden the local police and fire departments, which are already overextended, with additional areas to cover, and, as with many multifamily properties, will increase crime, neighbor disputes, traffic violations, and fire and health hazards. It will further eliminate the natural habitat of the, you know, trees, the deer, the animals, which has already started with the construction of the new properties on Kansas Avenue. As with all neighborhoods containing multifamily residential properties, it will lower the property values of single-family residential properties currently occupied and built or occupied in the future. It will also, we believe, that it will also open the door for future, future expansion of the commercial rezoning, which will only amplify the negative impacts listed above. And I have sixty-six signatures in the neighborhood.
May we have a copy of that?
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
I, I don't, do you have a copy machine?
I bet we have a copy machine. Do we have a copy machine?
We, we will connect with you and make sure that we get a copy of that document.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I'd like to move on to Betty North now. And as Betty's approaching, I want everybody to know that they're gonna be given the three minutes that they want to speak. Not a problem with that. But if you're going to find yourself repeating what you've already heard, just know that we've heard it, and we do take it seriously. You're welcome to say your piece, but just know that we, we are listening. Betty, come on up. State your name and your address, and you'll be given three minutes. And thank you for being here.
May I state, first of all, you may be amused to know that last night I spoke exactly five minutes, I believe, and today I revised my comments just a little bit, and I practiced over and over and over, and I had it precisely, that five minutes on the dot.
If you don't say anything, I won't say anything. Just go.
I come in tonight and I find out I only have three minutes.
You're fine, ma'am.
Panic set in.
Can we set her microphone down?
We're, we're gonna move that for you. Andrew broke it last time, so he's in charge of moving it this time. Don't, don't.
Would it be possible for planning zoning people to tell people, can you hear me?
Yeah, we need to do that. We'll talk about that.
That they will only have three minutes, so that they don't practice for five minutes?
You have my word on it, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Andrew?
There, fix that.
Is it okay?
You're good.
My name is Betty North. My husband and I, I'm gonna go fast, 'cause I don't know where my three minutes is gonna end up.
You're fine.
My husband and I have lived at 783 O'Neil Road for fifty years, and we lived in the house next door for ten years prior to that. We have seen the cow pastures, and the wheat, and the cornfields, and the apple orchard, and the vineyard, all become single-family homes. That wasn't inevitable, but multiple-family zoning should not be. Regarding the rezone, public testimony is of prime importance in rezoning decisions. Missouri lawmakers felt it was so important that they passed a law, RSMO 89.060, that gives extra weight to the opinions and concerns of the closest of the nearby property owners. The law requires a two-thirds majority of the final vote in order for rezoned tasks based on memorized protest forms of the nearest neighbors. That law is a compelling, is compelling evidence that in zoning cases, citizens' input should be a major consideration in determining the outcome of the rezone. Please note on the planning department's exhibits that it does state a rezone is, of the subject parcel to multifamily is not considered to be consistent to, with, single-family residential. Also, in thinking about the rezone request, consider whether the rezone aligns with the purposes of Missouri law, RSMO 89040. This proposed, this proposed rezone is not aligned with the purposes in this state law. I'll give you some examples. The first consideration in the law is reducing street congestion. This rezone will not lessen street congestion. It will definitely increase it. Land overcrowding. This rezoning will in fact result in land overcrowding. Character of the neighborhood. This rezone would change the character of the neighborhood to a less desirable one. Item number four in that state law, is home value. Again, this rezoning misses the mark. This rezoning to multifamily would not show consideration to the value of the adjoining home. Number five, RSMO 89040 mentions the most appropriate use of the land. Multifamily is definitely not the most appropriate use of this tract of land. So, on all five counts of the Missouri law, 89040, this rezoning application fails to meet the outlined criteria. Therefore, it should not be approved. Please consider that the denial of this rezone by the planning and zoning members is significant, and again, shows that this rezone is not appropriate. Councilmembers should be quite concerned about the overall long-term and short-term impact that multifamily development has on the city. The impact includes the effect it has The impact includes the effect it has on the overall, on, on our overcrowded school district and the pressure it puts on our transportation and traffic system. The city, the city should be forward-thinking and have a concern over the long-term maintenance of existing and future multifamily developments. When casting your vote, you should consider the potential for creation of light and substantial housing that multifamily development may produce within the city. I feel all of those problems are less likely to occur if the zoning on the land in question is medium-density single-family, so please deny the rezon. There is already precedent in Republic for denying rezoning requests for multifamily zoning into existing single-family neighborhoods. I feel that if you approve this, it will be an arbitrary and capricious decision, and in my opinion is spot zoning and is totally wrong. If you can't make up your mind on how to vote after considering the, the state laws and the zoning criteria, then ask yourself this one question. Would I want this in my backyard? Probably not. If I have any time, nine seconds left. All of the storm, I'll be, all of the stormwater from this area will flow across O'Neill Road and then flow across the back of our property, and then under Kansas, and then under Highway 174, and into the PDD that you recently approved on Highway 174.
Ms. North, I have to say you're the reason I do this job. Thank you very much for coming in and making that statement that was very well reasoned and thought out and written. I might be reaching out to you to see if you want to come work with me, so... Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
Brad Anderson's up next, and Mr. Anderson, you've got some big shoes to fill. She, she, she got it, didn't she? Uh, Sean Berry. Mr. Berry? Oh, I, I have you in the, you're speaking in favor, so I'll save you for last. Sorry, I had you in the wrong pile, that was totally my fault. Suzie Banasic. I think I know your husband, so that's how I know you. Is it sergeant?
Lieutenant.
Pardon me.
He's gone out, you haven't known him for a while.
So, but yes.
So, my property is 707 South Countryside, and it backs up to the T.
Ah.
Okay, the, the less wide strip, and I have several concerns. The builder showed a rendering of what he intends to put there, and those are two-story townhomes. I did my due diligence before I bought the property, and I understood that to be residential. I understood this to be agriculture, and that was a little more iffy, but that was not in my backyard. There is a utility easement that goes right on the end of my privacy fence, so I know that that will have to be brought into consideration whenever they're putting the townhomes in, but I am terrified that there, if this goes through, that I'll have a two-story townhome which will annihilate any privacy, everybody has privacy fences all the way down, which of course someone could build a two-story house there, but in, the discussion last night, they were speaking about the rules on how far the structure has to be from the property line, and on multifamily, it's fifteen feet. Fifteen feet, and that's the structure. That's not a patio, that's not anything else that might be out, which, again, is terrifying to think of. And there was also discussion about, if it was multifamily, how would they, there's rules about kind of disguising that from the neighbors to try to give privacy, so a six-foot privacy fence, but then they have to have trees or something, I can't remember the wording of what the gentleman said that was here last night, but in my mind, I'm thinking, well, if there's already utility lines there, we're not going to get very high with the trees, or we're going to get into issues with cutting them down because they're going to grow up and ice storms hit the area. So that's just a concern, is that I just feel like that's a narrow strip. I was, like I said, under the impression that, that was going to be medium-density single-family homes, and would have never dreamed that a structure like that would be put into such a small area. The other concern I have is a traffic issue, I know people have mentioned that, but the railroad tracks go over O'Neill Road and multiple times a day, and that stops traffic. I've been in it, I've made the mistake and turned right instead of left, and, and then guess what I did? The traffic wasn't up enough, so then I diverted into a neigh, another neighborhood. So they're already experiencing that with us that live out there, and then, how many people more would this bring into the mix of that? And stormwater drainage is kind of a thing that I often think maybe isn't looked at enough. I don't know if, if a study would be appropriate, but I noticed that there is a sinkhole across the street from this property, and so if you're going to not let that water be in that spot because you're going to concrete it off, that water's going to go somewhere. And I don't know how that works with a sinkhole, but I know it's not good. So that would be my main issue.
Thank you very much, ma'am, I appreciate it. And Erin Klusemeyer. Good evening, sir.
My name's Erin Klusemeyer, I'm with Arthur Johnson out of Springfield, I'm here on behalf of Brad and Denise Anderson, they have the ag property that is just south and west of the proposed rezoning. First of all, Councilwoman Mitchell had asked if the city's ever approved a jump in zoning from this level of density to R3, and at least the zoning commission indicated last night they've never approved that big of a jump in, in one hearing. But the, the issues that I want to hit on, I'll hit on real quick because no lawyer can make a statement in three minutes.
It's a struggle.
Ms. Haynes brought up the housing market study, and that is attached to the comprehensive plan, and I feel that's important because one question is, is this development consistent with the comprehensive plan? My argument would be, no, it's not, because the, the housing market study indicates there's currently a healthy inventory of multi-housing development in Republic, Missouri, that by 2025, multifamily development will be the closest to meeting demand, and that in 2040, Republic will actually have a surplus of multifamily units. So is multifamily development bad? No. Is it never to be allowed? No, but it needs to be in an appropriate area, and this is not an appropriate area. And it's not appropriate because it's incompatible with surrounding land uses. As you all know, there are clusters in Republic of where multifamily is, large multifamilies out near 60 and 174, and then the smaller multifamilies kind of in the older part of the city. Down here, we just have single-family residential and ag, and you're talking about wedging in between those in R3 that has a density that's three and a half times the allowable density of R1M and fifty-two times the allowable density of ag, which is not only going to diminish property values, it's going to create traffic issues, and as many have said, drainage issues, which is already a severe problem on my client's property. And then with respect to traffic, I, I want to start with what the traffic impact study does say. It does say that daily projected volumes, okay, so they're going to direct traffic over Lipscomb Avenue to O'Neill and then out to 60. That goes through a residential subdivision. Daily projected traffic volumes will increase over 336%, over 600% in the AM peak traffic hours, and then 335% PM peak traffic hours. I've driven down these roads, there's cars, boats, everything parked on them, it's down to one, basically one lane most of the time, and you're going to force multifamily traffic through that where kids are out playing in the neighborhood, and it creates safety issues. And then the one thing that the TIS does not look at is, it doesn't look at the intersection of O'Neill and US 60, and I think that's extremely important because all this traffic is going to be funneling out to 60 to get into town on the way to work, and then back to the subdivision from work, and like, as has been said, trains sit at that intersection, it causes congestion on 60. One of the main citizen concerns when you did the comprehensive SOAR 2040 plan was reducing congestion on 60, and this development would have the exact opposite effect. Okay, I think I managed to spit as much out as I could in three minutes.
I don't know that you took a breath, so well done. Thank you very much. Now that is all the cards that I have for speaking against. Is there anybody here that wants to speak against that has not had an opportunity to speak and hasn't heard their thoughts already? All right? We will now move to speaking in favor. Now, much like these gentlemen did by sitting here and politely listening to you, I know that I can trust you to do the exact same thing for them. Sean and Todd, who wants to go first? Very good.
And here is that rendering we've got that everybody was talking about.
Yep, right there on the chairs. Perfect.
And like you said when you started this, some people are absolutely terrified of public speaking, and I will take that snake any day of the year.
Fair enough.
So I also wrote this down so I could pass that to you guys, in case I do jumble it up.
That'd be just fine.
Screw up anything, I did not account for a city attorney or city administrator, so I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. Just state your name, and we'll get going.
Todd Wright, I'm the owner of Billwright Homes and 688 Kansas Avenue with the proposed zoning. I was going to start with Eric there to ask when 8:30 O'Neill was zoned, and it was actually when I brought it into the city in 2020, I annexed that, and 688 Kansas both into the city with this idea in mind. Thank you council members for giving me your time and consideration in this project. First, I would like to tell you a bit about myself and Billwright Homes. I grew up between Marionville and Billings and bought my first home in Republic in 2008. I now live back on the same family farm that I grew up on, but I do still own multiple properties here in Republic. I love this town and I'm proud of the steps that it's taken to grow and develop into what it's become today. Republic is one of the fastest-growing and hottest markets in our area, and that's because of the leadership of this town and the vision for growth that it has. Billwright Homes is a small remodel and investment company that primarily holds rental properties in Marionville and Republic. I wish for my hometown sake that we could follow Republic's policies for growth, because my little hometown is dying because of the fear of change in growth. Next, I would like to address many of the concerns that were laid out in the Planning and Zoning Commission last night. The number one concern brought up was too many people and too much traffic. We had the same concern as did the city planners, so we ran a professional traffic study on the proposed 88 units performed by CJW Transportation Consultants, and found there was no major impact for the area. We then ran a second traffic study to include a complete build-out to R3 to its maximum density of the 188 units, and again receive the same results, no major impact, and no further improvements necessary to accommodate the new neighborhood. Concern number two is the invasion of privacy. Building two-story townhomes on the back of R1 residential, many of the newer subdivisions in town are going two-story houses, going R3 will have a larger building setback and code-enforced privacy fences that are not required by the single-family two-story. Concern three was the lower property values. This morning, I actually wanted to see exactly what that would look like for the residents because that did bring concern to me as well. So the most comparable properties that I could find to best represent the proposed property is the Gray Street duplexes that are just southwest of where we sit now, an L-shaped multifamily portion of an otherwise R1 neighborhood. I pulled an unbiased statistical market analysis of homes that have sold within a quarter-mile radius of this development in the last 365 days. They averaged $163.34 per square foot, and there were fifteen homes that came up in that search. Homes that have sold within a quarter-mile radius of proposed development averaged $162.74 per square foot, twenty-two homes came up in that search. So statistically, there is minimal to no impact of desirability of these properties in relation to small multifamilies. Concern four was the petition and the ruling on would I want this in my backyard? I got a call from a friend that just helped, I had just helped purchase a home in this affected area, telling me that a petition was going around and the man was asking for signatures was forewarning that a Section 8 low-income development was going to be built where I'm proposing townhomes and duplexes. This is simply not true, and I found it to be rather concerning because it seems very easy to get petitions signed with false pretenses. Moving on. I, I do understand and feel for the neighbors to the southwest of this development. I would not want any development of land for housing of any type around a new home sitting on six acres. Their place is beautiful, but that is why I also choose to live 25 minutes from the nearest Walmart, it is a choice. I pulled the for-sale listing of the property that they bought in 2017, and the marketing remarks are, quote, "Excellent flat, six acres for development, great location in a rapidly growing area," end quote. So with that in mind, that too was a choice to build in an area prime for development. So to answer the question, no, I would not want that in my backyard, but I also choose space over convenience. I do understand that this is a rezon meeting and not a planning meeting, but in this case, I do believe they slightly overlap. If there is a contract I can sign that says this is all I will build, is the 88 units, I would gladly do so. I have two years, hundreds of hours, thousands of dollars in these plans that I've worked on with the city planners to develop for this challenging piece of land, and have no intention of building anything larger than that.
You know, Todd, thank you very much for your words, and I, I said this to Betty, but you're also the reason I do this job, because I get where you're coming from, I truly do. I appreciate the fact that you stood up there and read this in front of a group of people that just said the exact opposite, and I know that's not easy, so I appreciate your thoughts tonight. Thank you. And Sean.
Would it be possible to pull up a map so you all can see the configuration of the property?
Yeah, I think we can do that.
I'm going to talk about this from a planning and engineering perspective.
Sure.
And just wanted you guys to be able to see what we're talking about. And you can tell me when my time starts, but my name is Sean Berry, I'm with Tothen Associates. We're consulting engineering firm working on this development with Mr. Wright. We've been involved with him for a couple of years, we've been working with city planners to try to come up with something that'll fit this odd shape configuration of a property, and what we have laid out, and we'll be happy to provide you with copies of this through Karen, is a development that we think is consistent with the area and what we can actually fit on the property. And if you look at the, the size of this property going north and south, and you look at the way the spacing between the existing streets and how much width it takes to get houses on either side of a street, we don't have enough property left to do that. Single-family homes simply can't happen here. It's, it's not sustainable, or it's not affordable to build all the infrastructure to support a single-family development and only put houses on one side of the road, and so that's what you'd get with this north-south strip, and so it's just, for us, it's simply not possible to make it work. So our fear here is that if you all disapprove, some type of, something above single-family here, that you'll be left with a vacant property here for a long time. It's just, it's just not possible. So what we've done is we've laid out two pieces of this, the east-west piece is laid out with duplexes, and the, that helps us to better afford the north-south piece, which we've laid out with townhomes. One of the things that has been discussed is the fact that the rezoning will allow for a maximum density of 180 units, which is true, that's not what we're proposing here, we're proposing for 88 units, which is less than two times what a single-family home residential zoning would allow. So we're not talking about a significant increase, even though that the traffic study showed that the significant, significant increase up to 180 units wouldn't impact the local roads, we're talking about something much less. And so we would prefer to provide some cap to say this, this property can be rezoned to a point where it's up to a certain amount of units, it's kind of a happy medium, and I don't, after talking to planning and zoning, you, you all don't have a process for that, is our understanding, for a special overlay district that would cap off the number of units that would be allowed on this, but I think that would maximize what, what can be done here. I think that's, I think that's everything I have to say, do you have any questions regarding that?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this here tonight? All right, so, I'm going to recap. What we're going to do is, now that everybody's had their piece, we go back and we learn about it. As the city council and as the mayor, we go and we ask the questions that we need to ask to be able to make informed decisions, we'll come back at the next city council meeting, and we'll have a vote, and that vote will be up or down, and we'll have the decision decided at that point unless something happens. Anytime I say things categorically will happen, something comes up and somebody's sick, or we don't have a quorum or something. Our intention is to have this voted on at the next time. What can you do? That's a very common question that people ask. If you have a concern, you have a city council member, reach out to your city council member, you have city staff that can answer questions. If you have further questions, get in touch with your council member or with staff, and that's their job, it's to answer your questions. So that's the next step, and you're welcome to come back and watch the vote next week.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
And that is October 18th at 6 o'clock, so just for your calendars, that's when that, that vote takes place.
All right. Now I'm going to read my notes, make sure I got everything, I think I did. That concludes the business on item number 12 on our agenda, 22-58. It is six, almost, it's 6:47, so if you would like to leave, you're more than welcome to leave, if you want to stick around and watch the end of the meeting, you're welcome to do that too. I'm going to pause for just a second and let you make your decision. Thank you for being here.
Yes.
Um, yes, I do want a copy of that. LT? Thank you very much. He, he's reliable, he'll be able to get a copy of it. I can count on... I can count on him. Betty, are you staying? I love it. Thank you. I appreciate it. All right, moving on to item number ten on our agenda, this is a public hearing of the city council regarding amending Title Eight fees, chapter eight oh five fee schedule. At this time, I will open the public hearing in that regard. The way the public hearing will be conducted will be each individual who wishes to address the council on this matter will be given three minutes to speak. We will be starting with those in opposition and then moving on to those in favor. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in opposition of this matter? Please approach the podium. You will be given three minutes to speak. Seeing none, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this matter? Seeing none, I will close citizen participation, move on to item eleven on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of bill twenty-two dash fifty-seven by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero.
An ordinance of the city council amending the municipal code of the city of Republic, Missouri, Title Eight Fees, Chapter Eight Zero Five Fee Schedule, Section Eight Zero Five Point Zero Three Zero, Alcoholic Beverages, Section Eight Zero Five Point Zero Four Zero, Animals, Section Eight Zero Five Point Zero Five Zero, Buildings and Zoning, Section Eight Zero Five Point Zero Six Zero, Business, Section Eight Zero Five Point Zero Seven Zero, Fire Protection and Prevention, Section Eight Zero Five Point Zero Eight Zero, Parks and Recreation Fees, Section Eight Zero Five Point Zero Nine Zero, Special Event Fees, and Section Eight Zero Five Point One Hundred, Utility Administration.
Thank you, ma'am. Did somebody check her? Did she read that? Excellent. Good evening.
Good evening. Andrew Nelson, Deputy City Administrator. Um, so that's a lot. Um, but I'm gonna spend a lot of time like we always do on wastewater, because that's probably the biggest impact to the community in these fees that we're talking about. So our fee schedule is one massive piece of the code at the back, and so when we do this once a year, kind of pre-budget, uh, we amend all the fees at once. So in regards to the other fees that you, you heard mentioned, parks, um, fire, builds, all of those fees, those fees are what I would call more routine adjustment based on the cost of, of doing business. And that, on the park side, might be related to the, the raise in minimum wage or just the cost of materials in general. There's a long list there, so if the council has questions between now and the second read, I'd encourage you to reach out to the appropriate staff, um, and director of, of those areas. But just one that caught my attention is one in my own, own former area was street signs. And we've just seen kind of a crazy increase in cost and, in the cost of metal. So th- those are the, the adjustments you're seeing on all the other areas. So I'm gonna go in, into wastewater and talk about that a little bit. And David gave a history of wastewater from a infrastructure standpoint, uh, at the last meeting. And I'm gonna do just a brief history on rates, because I, I think it's important to know what we're doing tonight and, and where we're going. So the last time that the city, uh, the city council increased rates was the first rate increase we did in twenty twenty-one. And that, that approval had a, a series of five increases over five years. So you're like, we're in year two, why are you adjusting it? Um, so what happened was we issued, uh, the first rate increase in twenty twenty-one after a delay in those rate increases because of COVID. The first incremental increase was actually in July of twenty twenty, and then the, the second one was gonna be in January of twenty twenty-one. And we, we pushed that just given, uh, the impact that the pandemic had on the community. We had, we had even stopped shut-offs, uh, for a long period of time. So we, we had shifted right on that already. Now, in addition to that, we also went and secured our debt early for the wastewater improvements that we're doing. And the reason we did that, well, there, there was really two. We, the market was going nowhere but in the wrong direction for us as far as interest rates goes. So if you look at what the interest rate was gonna be today, if we secured those bonds, it would be almost triple. And that's, that's a lot of money, like in the millions, as far as interest goes. So a lot of favor in that, that timeframe when we secured those funds, but probably more importantly, having those funds secured allowed us to go and secure matching funds from the, from the state. And we're using those funds that we've secured to get more funds and thereby offsetting future rate increases. So, um, the council already knows, but we secured twenty-five million, uh, in, in the state's budget in ARPA funds for these wastewater improvements. And that, if I could put that into a dollar value, that probably means ten dollars a month to our citizens. So every dollar that we can go match is important. So doing that early made us go back and say, we gotta look at the rates, because that's not the, the schedule that we had. So in this second rate assessment, um, over the five-year period, it's still the same total of increases, but we're doing more of it on the first step. So what I'll say is this, this first increase that we're proposing is really the, it's the Band-Aid. And then it's pretty nor, what I would call normal levels of increase in, in the four years post that first increase. So, um, another comment, just in, in the history of rate increases, pre the work we did, uh, with this council, the last rate increase we did was actually twenty fourteen. So if, if you go back and, and look at, uh, CPI from twenty fourteen to that first rate increase we did in twenty twenty-one, had we just kept up with, um, CPI, I don't know that we would do necessarily a big rate increase right now. We'd still be looking at rate increases, but not the same level. But I, I think that's important for the council and the citizens to know, because at that time, we didn't know where to spend the money. So we had to develop a plan of capital improvements that made sense and actually solved the problems we have with compliance. Um, so more shock, yes, but I like to see it that we saved them money over a period of time while we got our act together. And, and that's where we're at today. So, um, I'll go on to the, to what everybody wants to know. What does it mean, uh, to our rates? So the, the first one, I, I talked about sewer. This is, this is the water rates. Uh, and you see where Republic stacks in comparison to our, our surrounding communities on the water rates, uh, existing and proposed. And the increase to, that we're looking at on the water side is minimal. It's, uh, about a dollar to the average user on the water side. It's not much, but it's, it's what we need to increase just to maintain operating, uh, due to the increase in costs that it, it takes for us to maintain that system. So Chris, if you'll go over to sewer, this is the, the unfund one, right? So you see, the first green bar toward the middle is where we stack today, um, and where we'll be with the new sewer rates in, in twenty twenty-three. Now, this doesn't account for the, the five commu, of the five communities that are in, in between us right now. Three of those I know for su, four of those I know for sure are in, also increasing their wastewater rates. So without knowing where they're gonna be, I think we actually sh, by the time they implement their rates, we kind of shift back to the position that we were before. But this is what it's gonna look like, given the, the most current information. I know, I know Springfield, uh, is also increasing the rates, which directly affects Battlefield and Willard. So, uh, doesn't look good here, but I think we, we are taking the biggest step, uh, probably initially, and we'll, over time, get back toward the middle. Uh, Chris, if you go to the, the next one, this is, um, this is the combined utility bill. So you see, we're toward the, the lower mid, midpoint of our community for the combined bill, water and sewer. And then we end up in the top, probably third, uh, but still behind Springfield, Joplin and Battlefield, even with this, uh, first big adjustment. I, I kind of mentioned it, on the water side, it's about a dollar for the average user, and we're saying the average user is about a four-thousand gallon user. On the sewer side, it's gonna be about fifteen to sixteen dollars a month. And that's, that, what that is funding is just the, the projects and debt that we've secured today. And that, that doesn't get us all the way there. So over the next five years, as we go and implement more and more improvements, why securing those matching dollars is important, it's helping us offset future rate increases. But if we don't get them, we have to consider that there may be further rate increases. And, and David and I, I've said it, you know, as we've gone about securing these funds or asking for these funds, something like wastewater that's tied to compliance is very expensive to manage. And so as more and more, um, requirements come with policy, depending on the political climate, while they sound, uh, really good, because water quality is important to all of us, I'm not sure there's a grasp for what that means to the, the person that has to pay for it and the community that has to pay for it. So, um, th, those regulations are real. Um, we've said all along, your, your sewer bill will be close to your cell phone bill, and that's, that's a different story than, than we have today. So I'll take any questions.
You know, I, you know how I look at things. I, I wanna know worst-case scenario. What happens if we don't pass this? What happens?
It, I would say that we're in a place where the, at least the first year of this proposed series of rate increases is a must, because we have to, uh, pay that debt back. But if we don't, um, then we don't have the funds to, to pay the debt, we don't do the improvements, and then we're, we're into an enforcement problem with M D N R.
What's that mean?
It means that they'll, um, they could fine us. Um, if, if you recall, Mr. Cameron talked about, basically what happens is we're, when it rains, we're pouring ten gallons into the five-gallon bucket. Um, and every time that happens, uh, there's a fine associated. It's not a lot at first. Um, there's varying levels of, of enforcement, but they can eventually dictate to you how much improvements you're gonna do a, a year. And that affects not only your wastewater fund, but it could affect your general fund. So they're gonna say, okay, enough, this, and this is probably a long period of time. I'm not, this is not like tomorrow. You're gonna do this amount of improvement. This is what you have to do. Um, and it's not a great situation to be in. I think the actual term, correct me if I'm wrong, is consent decree at that point.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Andrew, would, if we pass this, how does that work? Do, do people's bills just go up and that's when they find out?
No. So, once passed, we'll, we, we'll do a, a publication that, that says, it, it'll be similar to what you have in front of you in that rate study, which is publicly available. It'll, it'll show what you can expect, and these rates are effective January first. So there's, there's a timeframe of, of awareness and communication that we have to do. But you can, uh, you can go into that study, and it shows like, based on how much you use, what you can expect your bill to be.
Mr. Franklin.
Mr. Mayor, Andrew, a lot of great information on the sewer, so I really appreciate that. You've answered so many di, different questions, so I really appreciate that. My curiosity actually went to something different, and it's the street stop signs. I know you had said that there was a, quite a bit of an increase. Does that include the labor as well, or is that just for a stop sign to post and?
Yeah, I would like to say that we, we're very, um, conservative on the recapture of labor for something like that, because we do our best to say, um, oh, this is reaching back to when I was involved in it. But I take Doug Short, for example, and I say, it's gonna take Doug about an hour and a half with this truck and this equipment to go and do a normal, uh, street sign. So yeah, we, we factor that in, but we try to stay really conservative, and most of our fees are that way. Uh, you, you know, we've had questions about building permit fees recently, and what I have to remind people that are getting those permits is it does not account for time that David spends, I spend, Karen spends. Like administratively, what we have to do to facilitate the review and, and, uh, approval of that permit. So we don't, in a lot of places, we're far from capturing the cost, but it's a service that we provide.
Sure, and that's, that's typically in, in new set divisions and whatnot when you say, okay.
Yeah.
And that's what I thought. I just, the, the price caught me off guard just a little bit, but.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Hello.
All right, seeing none. Thank you, sir. Please remember that this is a first read, so if you do have any other questions, get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to other business, specifically resolutions, item number thirteen is twenty-two dash R dash sixty-five, a resolution of the city council authorizing the city administrator to negotiate an agreement with the Empire District Electric Company for the dedication of a parking area at the future Joshua Morris Park. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-two dash R dash sixty-five, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Brickner.
Good evening. Uh, Garrett Brickner, um, Assistant Builds Administrator. So if you recall, last year, um, the city acquired a piece of property that the church, the United Pentecostal Life Center, actually donated this property to us. It's mostly floodplain, and there is a drainage issue on the north side that, um, goes into Logan Street up to the north. So the city acquired it with the intention of doing some stormwater improvements and also with the intention of the potential to make it a park someday. So where we're at right now, um, is this agreement would allow us to begin negotiations with Liberty, who actually owns the property, um, that fronts one seventy-four, for them to donate a portion of their property that they're not gonna use for us to, uh, build this parking lot. In exchange for what we would do is include the stormwater detention that would be required from their development in our ultimate stormwater improvement. So it kind of acts as a regional detention area. So, uh, nothing has been agreed to yet. This is just to give us the authority to begin those negotiations with them.
Thank you, sir. Questions from council?
Is this the site that you guys are talking about, Dog Park?
Potentially, yes.
Mr. Franklin.
So does this go through that church property as well?
A little bit. Um, so what we would have to do is a joint, um, driveway onto one seventy-four. So we would work with them to, um, it, yes.
Then the city would be liable for that section of road ma, maintenance-wise?
Yes, it would be.
Parks and Rec City.
It would be under us, yes.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none. Chris, you really don't have one about a potential dog park. I figured you'd be all over this.
I, I am. I'm, I'm, this is just, this is about the parking lot, not about the park.
All right, fair enough, fair enough.
If this is about the park, I'd be all over it, but this is just a parking lot.
I'll, I'll let it pass. All right, as this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote, so all those in favor of twenty-two dash R dash sixty-five, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries eight to zero. Moving on to item number fourteen on our agenda, this is twenty-two dash R dash sixty-six, a resolution of the city council authorizing the city administrator to execute a second addendum to the agreement for financial consulting services with Maximist LLC. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-two dash R dash sixty-six.
Motion.
Second.
Did you get that? Who gave the motion? Raise your hand if you give a motion.
There's, I think there's three or four.
All right. Take your pick. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, Megan Cook, Finance Director. I am bringing before you this evening an annual contract renewal with Maximist LLC. Larry Brown assists with financial consulting services on an as-needed basis for the city. He has assisted the city with various projects and coverage for the finance department as needed over the years. He typically comes in to assist in coverage during the finance director's vacation leave, which are each year, which provides additional oversight and review of the city funds. His hourly rate is remaining the same. However, we have reduced the not-to-exceed amount to twenty thousand dollars. This still allows room should we need to call upon Larry for additional project or coverage as needed for our department. With that, I welcome any questions.
Questions from council? Yes, sir.
So what are we, what are we historically?
We typically spend for like a two-week period. Um, we usually bring them in about three days for each week. Um, so seventy-two hundred if we're just typically calling upon them for the two weeks.
You said you reduced it, Megan.
Yeah, we reduced it. So last year was kind of, I don't wanna call anomaly, but I came in and then I was on maternity leave. So last year, we had to increase it, so I just brought it back down to put it more in line with what we typically use.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, I'll call it immediately for a vote. All those in favor of twenty-two dash R dash sixty-six, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries eight to zero. Moving on to reports from staff. Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Todd, it's great to see you tonight. Betty, thanks for coming. Todd, I'm sorry AT&amp;T tore up your yard. We're gonna, a, as I told you, we will, uh, work very diligently on the issue, because it's not the only conversation we've had. We've got street cuts where, even on our city streets, where that is, uh, been taken, uh, care of. Betty, thanks for coming out to express your concerns. I haven't seen you for a while. But, uh, I just appreciate everybody that came out tonight to, to talk about the zoning. Those are not easy issues, and so to hear the information, to hear from the community is always, is always good for us. Naturally, I'm not gonna go into the wastewater discussion a lot. It's, it's, it's kind of a gut punch when you, you're, you're working hard to change the, the direction of a community, and then you're dealing with the past a little, a little bit as well. So I would still encourage the community to go on our webpage, because we did do an information session last time. There is a video that talks about the history of the city's wastewater system. And just a, you know, brief overview where back, I believe it was the late nineties, where the citizens did vote for the location of that plant. And Andrew and I were in Kansas City again for our annual visit yesterday. And, you know, it does not get any easier. It's like, it seems like you're trying to hit at a moving target, be it environmental regulations are changing. They're evolving, even with our own compliance agreement. But to put in perspective, we learned yesterday that the electrical cost alone, electrical, had increased by twenty-two million dollars, increased from a year. So electrical components have some, some areas had over a year and a half lead time that you had to order them now. So we're, we're, we're throwing at a moving target as much as we can. So last year, when the mayor said, when you're saying minimize impact to the citizens, and what keeps you up at night? It's trying to track down what is going to change in the political climate? We spent all last year to raise twenty-five million to hear that even in that twenty-five million, it's already eaten up by just an electrical change of inflation. I don't care your political affiliation. We, we've got some real crisis going on when it comes to the cost and trying to figure out how to deal with that. So we're gonna have to go back and start work, we met with the engineers and start working to continue to figure out a way to scale back to make sure, you know, that that rates aren't triple. But that's beyond our, what I'd say this, is I'd love to say that it was within our control. This is something that we're having to do to meet compliance, Mayor, to answer your question. What happens is we're under a compliance order where we signed an order that stated, we understand, we will, we will be fined. So in our compliance order says, we will be fined, and we agreed to the fines that we were willing to pay when we do not comply. So we will have to meet that compliance date. We will meet that compliance date, and we'll continue to ask for funding for doing that. Andrew, I thought you did a great job of explaining it, but I would again encourage the community, city council members and any, if you wanna learn more about the history of what's creating a lot of these challenges, you can go to that, to that video. But just for reference, I want, I wanna use this because Andrew brought it to my attention yesterday, but there was one of the developments. I wanna say it's a roughly a seven million dollar improvement that we have to make in one of the areas because we use pump stations in this town in that area. Do you know how many homes are in that one area? Three hundred and sixty-five. So to address three hundred and sixty-five homes, there's a seven million dollar improvement that has to be made because there's over four times or eight times during a rain event, stormwater going through that, that has to be pumped. So it doesn't even affect those three hundred and sixty-five homes. That's crazy. So we're just gonna have to continue to work, and we will continue to work diligently to do that, and we'll be working on that the next legislative session. But tomorrow, Andrew and I are going to Washington, DC. We have an allocation that we're going up there to continuously work on between Andrew, myself, and the mayor. We worked on a five million dollar funding mechanism that did make it through Congress. Is going to the Senate for a vote, and so we're gonna be going up there tomorrow to work on, to communicate our need for that additional five million dollars. This will be associated with the water system. So I don't have time, and I just wanna make this as brief as I can. But again, we're working on every angle that we can to minimize the impact in those rates. So water has always been historically low. Water rates have been historically low in this city because the sewer rates have been historically high. And so finding a mechanism to paint water towers, to build another water tower, that's not free. So we gotta continuously look for money that's available without raising rates to do that. And that's our commitment to this council, to this community, that we're not just sitting there raising rates and not putting in the work to go find it. That was twenty-five million. This will be an additional five. So we've raised thirty, only to hear that twenty-two million in electrical cost. It feels like you're just punching at the wind. But we're gonna continue to fight and and push for that. But we will provide you an update. Representative Trent was in the area, Curtis Trent. He's running for senate. I don't, I think he's running unopposed, if I'm correct, on that for, in November. So he was a, a strong proponent for us last year in the legislative session. So he and I did a driving tour of the community here a couple of weeks ago. I showed him the development. Also talked to him about the impact and the importance of the upcoming legislative session, how we were positioned. I guess you could say we're positioning ourselves to get ready for positioning ourselves again in Jefferson City in January. And after yesterday, we may just rent apartments and live there during the week. But, so, but I just wanna, I I do wanna thank these representatives of making themselves available and hearing our story and believing in it. We were the city that got the the largest amount, a single largest amount. So I just appreciate the work that they've done. Microceiling, I know everybody's excited more about streets than they are about sewer. I can understand why. That will begin, I understand, this week? Correct. So thank you for getting that done. Jennifer, Jared, Pumpkin Days, to the Pumpkin Days Committee, to the Kiwanis, it all came together. I think this is a pretty cool thing that where it used to be three different silos, if you will, doing three different things. Well, I guess we weren't really so much involved. But I do commend you all publicly because I know where that started. It was, we talked about the trust edge in this organization, the eight pillars. It talks about the connection pillar, and they took that pillar to heart where they wanted to connect and be more a part of like the downtown Christmas. A lot of that started in a connection pillar with them reaching out, I'm back to downtown Christmas, I'm talking about Pumpkin Day, sorry, older age. So, but I appreciate the work that you guys do to to bring that collaboration, to bring the connectivity to all of those. And so job well done. I I don't know how big the crowd was. I know that to the police and fire, I know it's an additional addition to your weekend, and they're like having people out there and serving the community in that capacity. It's another large-scale event, and it's not always easy to have three days tied up, but I appreciate everybody that participated to make that happen. And in the RBI update, those that do not know, the RBI is Rural Broadband Initiative. We have signed the contract. We signed it, or we authorized the contract today. This council has authorized us to look at how to install broadband into the whole community. I think that's probably what's helping to promote more broadband, but maybe tearing up some laterals too. So that's a two hundred eighty-nine, two hundred ninety-one thousand, a hundred and sixty-dollar contract. We will have a proportionate share. I believe our portion is ballpark, eleven percent of that. So we're probably gonna be at roughly thirty thousand dollars, which this council has already approved. And I'm happy to say that I will, we'll be gone tomorrow through Friday, right? And then I'm out next week because I plan to turn fifty in peace. So Todd, that, Todd, that means I get to hit from the white tee after next Thursday, or wait from Thursday. But that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Really, the white tee?
The white. So there is, there, I gotta have a few more minutes. Yes. So in our game that we play, our golf game, if if you're fifty or younger, that's right, you have to hit from the back tee or the blue tee, but whenever you turn fifty, you get to go the white tee. So that matters when you're playing. People like Todd Bessor. So anyway, and Dustin Baldwin, anybody else that's listening to this, that I'm looking forward to it. So that's all I have.
You sure?
I'm done.
All right. Reports from council. Mr. Wilson.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Jared on his crew on the event at JR Martin Park Friday and Saturday. I was down there Saturday morning watching him run around all over the place trying to get things set and going good. And to me, it appeared they went real well.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Franklin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Definitely echo a lot of what David had said. And I really appreciate having the workshop and all of the work that's gone into the sewer and the water and and all the questions, all the education. Sitting here as many years as, you can never learn everything, and so every chance is another opportunity, and I really appreciate it. You all did a thorough job. Thank you very much. Pumpkin Days, great feedback from everybody. So as always, excellent job on that. One of the most impressive things for me is that two nights in a row now, a number of citizens have come to these chambers to speak. And to get people to do that one time in a year is impressive. And when they do it two nights in a row on the same week, that is outstanding. And so I really appreciate all of the citizens that came to speak to us here at council. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Self.
I just wanna thank Todd for coming out and voicing his opinion and also the contact that I've had with the city regarding the AT&amp;T and the fiber issue. We are one of the beginning stages for them in this town, city. And so I, I appreciate reaching out to them and helping us in any way you can because I was one of those houses that had the gas line, the sewer line, the sprinkler line. I had the trifecta. So I, I, again, I appreciate Todd coming out tonight and voicing his concern as well, so.
Yes, sir.
Earlier, when we were hearing from the developer for this area, they're trying to rezone. He'd mentioned a petition going around and what, third party, he'd heard about the petition. There was some verbiage used that having gone to the meeting last night and then speaking with some of those people who were attending and speaking against it in this meeting, I I just asked them in the little group that had gathered if they were specifically against this type of housing in Republic or just in this place. Just to make sure that it wasn't some kind of maybe bias against what could be considered low income. And not a single person said anything about low income and keeping it out. So I wanted to make sure that that was on the record and that was what they said last night to me.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Well, as mayor, I get the last word, and I appreciate that, but I'm gonna piggyback on what Mr. Franklin said. It's amazing what we can get used to. It's amazing that we get used to what we do. We, we come in week after week. You come in as staff and do it day after day, and we're used to it. But when citizens come in and have the courage to stand up here and speak, that's, that's why we do this. So whether you spoke for or against, know that you were heard. Now I'm copying you because that's good work. You were heard. We will listen, and we will go back and we will learn, and then we will come back and vote. So thank you for being here tonight.